Thank you for tuning into Exeter TV. The meeting will be starting shortly. While we wait, let's learn more about Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels, available on Comcast Channels 98 and 22. Channel 98 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAA 16 and can be found on Channel 13, with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Bi-Weekly Report, with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV, and hope that you tune into our other content as well.
Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to the Exeter Planning Board Meeting of May 26, 2020, 7:00 in the O'Leary Room. I'd like to start off by introducing or having the boards introduce themselves. I'm Langdon Plummer, I'm Chair. And Robin, would you start, please?
Robin Tyner, alternate.
John Grudue.
John?
Pete Cameron, Clerk.
Jennifer Martel.
Nancy Belanger.
Okay. And Dave Sharplees is with us this evening. And our first item of business this evening is the minutes from May 12. Any comments, corrections, errors, or omissions?
I do. Sorry. It'll be quick. Go first. Page four, lines 168, 169.
Just a minute. That takes a while to get to page four. Okay. Okay, right to the bottom of the page. Yes.
Yeah, I didn't ask about whether the angle could be straightened out. What I requested to see the aerial view again was to get a better perspective and view of the situation where Mr. Donnell's driveway was.
Yes.
So if we could change that to Ms. Belanger requested to see the aerial view of Mr. Donnell's driveway, to get a better perspective of that situation. Or something to that effect.
Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
No.
Anything else?
I just have one.
Yes.
So line 72, page two, and 73, where it says, "Ms. Martel pointed out the elevation rim referencing PYD number eight and .85 elevation with 42 contour," right next to that, "and questioned if water can be stored in that .185-inch area." That was...I don't think those numbers are exactly right, but I didn't go back and check. But I'm just wondering if we can just simplify it and get rid of the actual numbers, just in case they're not right, by saying something like, "Ms. Martel pointed out the elevation rim of PYD number eight, and questioned if water can be stored in the small area given, for example, with six-inch..." Dot, dot, dot.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
What line was that?
72 and 73. Just kind of getting rid of the specific numbers and generalizing the statement a little more.
Robin is, huh?
You have one.
Robin, you're next.
I am. So line 152, and I think I had asked if they had consulted either, I guess, their own environmental clubs or our sustainability committee, the town one, and Piscataqua River Keepers. It's not Gatekeepers. It's River Keepers. And it wasn't about establishing the site for the project, it was about the fertilizer usage for the project.
Okay.
I think he means establish the plant material on the site.
Right.
Anybody have a motion, please?
Also moved.
Second. As amended, right?
As revised, sure.
Okay. Those in favor, we can do this on a voice vote. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Okay, next. First on the agenda. Oh, I should announce, excuse me, I'm going to need a mission, a motion, the application of Woolly Creek Company. They've asked to be...
Continued, continued until the June 9th Planning Board Meeting at 7:00 PM.
Yes. Who'd like to make that motion?
So moved.
Moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Voice vote, those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? The ayes have it. Thank you very much. And so anybody that's here for that case, you can go home and watch the rest of the teach show on the TV. Have popcorn thrown at us. Okay, we got an application from Rafferty Investment Group, LLC, come over here. "For a minor subdivision of existing 7.3-acre parcel located at 54 Drinkwater Road on two residential lots, subject property is located in the R1 Low Density Residential Zoning District and is tax map parcel number 106-1 and Planning Base Board Case Number 22-4." And Dave, would you start us off, please?
Sure. First, the application is complete for review purposes, in my opinion. I don't know if you've accepted the application yet.
Okay.
I don't think we have.
No, we haven't. Ready to be heard?
It is, in my opinion.
Motion, please?
So moved.
Moved and seconded.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Thank you. Voice vote, please, those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? The ayes have it. Thank you much. And the floor is yours, Mr. Sharplees.
Thank you. And I'm up here again tonight because we still haven't gotten a mic from my table, so I will be jumping back and forth because we only have one mic to share. As you said, the applicant is seeking a minor subdivision of a 7.3-acre parcel located on Drinkwater Road, and the applicant intends to demolish the existing home and remove all accessory structures and debris currently on the property. It's in the R1 district, as you said. They did submit a minor subdivision plan supporting documents dated April 4th, which were provided in your last meeting packet, but as noted at the last meeting, I contacted the applicant to discuss the delineation of the proposed well location and the well radius because the original one transcended the property boundaries, and I informed the applicant that it's been the planning board's routine action is to see, make sure the 75-foot well radius is completely within the lot that it is intended to serve, unless for some reason it goes out into a right-of-way, and then, you know, that'll be discussed with TPW and so forth. The applicant wasn't able to provide a revised plan in time for the meeting, but they have since, and there you have the new plan that is in front of you, and you'll see that the well radius is toward the rear of the project, 75-foot well radius is completely within the newly created lot, as well as the reserved area for the septic system. There are no waivers being requested, and the code enforcement officer has determined that it meets the zoning regulations requiring, you know, regarding frontage and minimum lot areas. So I will be prepared. I do have suggested conditions of approval, should the board act on the application.
Thank you. Someone here to speak to that, or you're just...
The floor needs to open to the public.
Oh, yes. Well, I will.
I'm Scott Rafferty of Rafferty Investment Group. For this subdivision, we're looking to, basically, everything should be met in regards to setbacks, dimensions. Went to the code enforcement to check as well prior to doing this. We're looking to put two single-family homes on the property, myself and another party. As you can tell, or I don't know if any of you have driven by, that the property was fairly derelict in regards to the current state with a bunch of debris, trash. The inside was quite a mess as well, and we were able to get that lot and divide it so everyone can meet the standard requirements regarded, so.
Good. Any questions of the applicant?
The lot with the existing home, that well in Leach Field doesn't exist, right? Yet.
That's where you want to put it.
Yep. So let me check here. So currently, the well does exist. We haven't done any tests on the well yet, well water or whatnot. The Leach Field would be moved, currently it's almost right behind the current house. The Leach Field would be moved back probably about, I would say, 30 feet from the house.
But still 75 from the well.
Yes, yep. So the current diagram that you have is the 75 setback, but the Leach Field would be new. So, yes.
Let me open to the public, then. Anybody in the public who can speak to this case? If so, please step to the microphone. And do it yourselves, so our viewers at home will know who's speaking. Quiet crowd this night.
It's coming.
Okay. All right. Seeing none, then I'll bring it back to the board. Any discussion? Questions?
This seemed relatively straightforward.
Yeah.
How about a motion? Right here. Oh.
Oh.
Conditions?
Okay, conditions. A DWG file of the plan shall be provided to the town planner, showing all property lines and monuments prior to the signing of the final plans. This plan must be in a NAD 1983 State Plane, New Hampshire, FIPS, 2,080-foot feet coordinates. So do you do these all at once, or?
That's...
Did you read all?
Yes.
Okay, okay. The final plan shall have, number two, the final plan shall have notes as required by Section 6.2.4M regarding wetlands, and three. The monumentation shall be set in accordance with Section 9.2.5 of the Site Plan Review and Subdivision Regulations prior to the signing of the final plans.
Okay.
That's my motion, then.
Well, that's your, those are the conditions.
You approve the plan with those conditions?
Now the whole motion?
Okay, then, the motion would be a minor subdivision motion. I approve that the request of Rafferty Investment Group, LLC, Planning Board Case Number 22-4 for minor subdivision approval be approved with the following, with the conditions just read.
Second.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Thank you. Any discussion on that? It'll be a roll call vote, so Robin, you are acting tonight, so can you?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you.
Yes.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Your name is voting?
Aye.
You're all set. As long as you follow all the rules. All right. Okay, the next. It's the Application of Exxonian Properties LLC for minor site plan review and, excuse me, for proposed multifamily condominium development within the existing structure located at 43 Front Street, formerly Baptist Church. The subject property is located in the R2 Single Family Residential Zoning District and is tax map parcel number 72-198, is Planning Board Case Number 22-6. And Dave, do you have some comments to start off with? Oh, he's got a microphone on.
I do, yeah. Get over here for a second. The applicant submitted application and plans for a minor site plan review for the proposed conversion of the church, the First Baptist Church of 43 Front Street, into 11 residential condominium units. The applicant did appear before the Zoning Board of Adjustment. Its March 15, 2022 meeting was granted a variance for the change in use permit to, yeah, in the change in use, to permit a multifamily residential unit use, and a second variance for relief from the on-street parking requirements, which was first tabled and subsequently approved. I provided the decision letter along with the minutes of those meetings. The applicant also met on-site with the members of the Demolition Review Committee to consider the demolitions of portions of the existing roof. The DRC determined the structure to be significant, and in accordance with Section 5.3.5D4 of the Exeter Zoning Ordinance, recommended that a public hearing be scheduled to consider the public comment. The public hearing was conducted by the Heritage Commission, and I enclosed a letter from the DRC, and a copy of those minutes is also enclosed for your review. The applicant then appeared before the Historic District Commission on three separate occasions to review the project, and a copy of their Certificate of Appropriateness, which they did issue dated February 17, 2020, is enclosed, noting the conditions of approval. As stated earlier, the proposal is convert the existing church into residential units and no changes to the exterior site of, exterior of the site are being proposed outside of some black aluminum fencing and exterior wall lighting as shown on Exhibit B in your packets. Due to the lack of site improvements, because really it's just fencing and some wall packs and interior construction, there was no TRC review, but the materials have been reviewed by staff to determine compliance with the Planning and Zoning Regulations and found no issues, except that the applicant needed to request a waiver because they did receive a variance from parking from the zoning ordinance and the Zoning Board of Adjustment, but they also need a waiver from Section 9.13.1 of the Board Site Plan Review and Subdivision Regulations that require, is a requirement to provide parking in conformance with the zoning ordinance. So they have to go get a variance from the zoning, just like a recent project downtown in the Ioka did the same thing, converted a non-residential use to a residential use, and they needed a variance from the parking, unless it was grandfathered, I'm not sure on that one, but they needed a waiver from the Planning Board, and that's the same case here. I am prepared with suggested conditions of approval if the board does get to that point.
Thank you.
So I have, thank you.
The floor is yours. We'll bring your microphone back. We promise.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Sharon Summers. I'm an attorney with Donahue Tucker &amp; Shandela. I'm here tonight representing the Exxonian Properties LLC. As stated, we are here tonight to seek, first of all, that this application be deemed complete, accepting that, and also to then approve the site review application tonight, as well as the waiver request that we've submitted for parking. With me tonight and are available to answer any questions which you may have are the principals of Exxonian, which are David Cowie, or who are, rather, David Cowie and Florence Ruffner. So this is, as Dave Sharplees has indicated, this site review is triggered solely by virtue of the fact that we are changing the use to multifamily. There are no changes to the site, and as the staff member has indicated, that the application has been reviewed for compliance with the site regs and zoning, and that the only issue that has been noted needing any further relief would be the parking. The zoning relief for parking and the change of use has previously been obtained by us, as Dave has noted, and the, also, I would indicate that the project doesn't, the project does not call for the construction of any infrastructure in the town. It really is simply a renovation of an existing building, and also, it will go from being a tax-exempt property to a fully taxable, tax-generating property, which hopefully will be of interest and benefit to the town. The project itself is, as shown in the packet that we have provided to you, we gave you a packet which included a property boundary survey, as well as, and this is really just for informational purposes, we gave you Exhibit B, which includes all of the various architectural proposals and shows what we propose to do to the exterior of the building, and kind of a snapshot of what the interior of the building is going to look like. Again, this isn't really necessarily germane to your analysis, but we thought it might be helpful for you to have some context in terms of what we're doing. Exhibit B of your packet material also contains a surface parking plan, and that does show that we have room for two spaces, possibly three, on-site, but really, in terms of availability for surface parking, that's it. There's really nothing else that we can do, and I'll get into that in a little bit more detail later on when I talk about the waiver request. Additionally, with regards to the parking, I know that the staff materials included, I believe, the minutes of the ZBA proceedings, and hopefully they did, because I think if the board has taken a look at that, page three of those minutes contain a pretty robust discussion between various Planning Board members and Mr. Cowie with regards to the critical issue of why we can't provide on-site parking. And in that, what is discussed and what is indicated is the fact that, by virtue of the fact that we are working very diligently in conjunction with our Certificate of Appropriateness from the HDC to retain the historic building, that means that we're not going to demolish it, and that means that there's no room on-site for surface parking. There was also quite an extensive discussion about the mechanics of the fact that underground parking simply is not a viable proposition, both due to the complexity of the foundation and the supports and so forth, and also because of the sheer expense of that. So I would urge the Planning Board to take a look at those minutes because I think that will be a helpful background for you to have. So if the board has any questions at this point, that they, or if you'd rather wait till the end, I don't know if you have any questions of curiosity or concern about the actual proposal, and if not, if the board is ready, I can proceed to the waiver request discussion right now. What's the board's pleasure?
I have a question, Mr. Chair.
Sure.
Of the applicant.
Sure.
So I'm, I was wondering if you could clarify, or if your architect could clarify, the fencing, the proposed fencing that's going around the building?
Yeah.
Is that, so like, when I'm looking at these Axon metric drawings, there's like, kind of a black bar around the bottom?
I'm sorry, which?
It shows up in pretty much all of the like, blue and white Axon drawings, so maybe she...
There are titles on each sheet, which is, I know, the only way that I can figure out...
Proposed replacement front entry street doors with neutral copper applied.
Okay.
Is one of the sheets.
Proposed, I'm sorry, which? Oh, proposed replacement front street entry doors, yeah?
Yep. So I'm looking at, not the photograph, but the drawing to the right.
Uh-huh.
And I'm seeing a black kind of bar going all the way around the building.
Okay.
It's at the bottom of the steps. Is that all of this, is that all this black aluminum fence that we're seeing?
I think what that is referring to, and Dave and Florence feel free to jump in anytime you want, but I think if you turn, if you go to the next shot, the page that's titled "Front Terrace Design, Railings and Planter Divider," you'll see there that there is a, basically, a black aluminum railing that's going to be in the locations depicted, and that's what's showing up as kind of a, more of a solid bar on that prior page.
So that's all proposed railing? That's not existing today?
Correct.
Okay.
And I think also, yeah, that's it for the proposed railing. There's a kind of a screen wall in the back that's going to surround the trash and the mechanical area. That's a couple of pages back. But yes, that aluminum railing that you see there, that is proposed, and that's been part of the approval by the Historic District Commission.
It's just, it doesn't show up in the site plan?
Well, the site plan was just simply a boundary plan.
But usually, am I right, Dave, that we would receive a fence would be a pretty significant, I think, site improvement that is required to be included in the site plan?
Well, there's no specific requirement that has the fence to have been shown on the site plan. It is shown on the elevations, but you're right. Usually it is. This was just a boundary plan. That's what they did. They did a plan on land with existing conditions.
Okay. And I guess what I'm getting at is that, my concern is, from the photographs, it's difficult to tell where there might be gates, and how close those gates might be to the sidewalk, and whether, when that gate is open, if it could open into the sidewalk, which is definitely would be a concern of mine. So that's why I would definitely like to see where the fence is going to be located in the site plan view, especially with regard to the perimeter property line.
Yeah, there are no gates. I've just been advised by David and Florence, and also, I think if you do look at that sheet that's labeled "Front Terrace Design," the railings that are on the street level really are just, they're fully enclosed, so there aren't any, there aren't any gates that are going to be going out onto the street.
That's the stairs, right?
It's at the bottom of the stairs, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, it's hard to tell from that, just where the, I don't know if that's a sidewalk or property.
Well, it's intended, I mean, those railings, that system that you see there really is designed to service the units that are going to be in the front of the building, and to provide to them, you know, some degree of privacy and so forth, and it's also, I think, intended to make sure that this is not supposed to be an accessway for members of the public.
Mm-hmm.
They're going to come and go from their units, from the interior to the outside.
Oh, my. I'm not sure we're all talking about this.
No.
It looks like that they...
There's gates at the bottom of this.
Are there going to be gates? I guess that's the question.
There are not.
What page are you on? John's holding it up.
Yeah, "Front Terrace Design at the Bottom of the Steps," there's a...
There are two openings. There have to be two openings, because what's the purpose of having those at the bottom of the steps? You're right. Keep going.
"Front Terrace," huh?
It's this one here.
I've seen it.
Yeah, that's the one, but she's saying that's not the, that's the side of the, no, I'm confused.
I don't, I don't see any gates here. I'm just not sure.
Hello, my name is David Cowie, one of the owners. So you are correct, there are gates at the front. There's no gates on the side railings, by the east and west side. There are two small gates on the front.
And they open in?
They open out.
I think they would swing both. They would swing both. I think they would swing both, they would swing both directions.
I think that's, I mean, that's a detail that I would like to, I think is important when it comes to the site plan. And it's also important for egress, you need to know how your gate's going to swing, because if somebody is escaping from a fire, for example, it's got to swing out.
Typically, those gates will swing in and out, both ways. But we can, we can make sure that the gates do not swing onto the sidewalk.
Do you know if they're single gates, or are they double gates?
Single gates is what was proposed.
So, they're about four feet wide?
And there's at least two, right? Yeah, one on either side.
Well, the width of the steps.
Yeah, but they're modifying the steps.
They're modifying the steps, yeah. So, yeah, there's no dimension. There's no site plan. I guess that's what's bothering me, it's hard to review it if there's no site plan.
If the, if the concern, if the concern is, is that whether there are gates, and basically what the relationship of the railing is going to be to the street, we can certainly, without having to go back and do something other than this boundary survey, I think that we can certainly, perhaps as part of a condition of approval, I mean, this has been approved by the HDC with these plans, I mean, perhaps what we could do is to tie your concern into the HDC approval, to indicate that the railings are going to be constructed in accordance with the HDC approval, and if it's the board's need to have more detailed information about the manner in which the gates are going to open, or close, or anything like that, we can, we can provide that as well.
Yeah, I have a question. Do you need those?
Just for privacy.
Florence's preferences is we don't have them, so.
Get rid of them.
Thank you.
Can start at the...
Yeah.
That takes care of that.
Thank you. Okay.
Thank you.
That'll solve that problem.
Wonderful.
Okay. Any other questions?
Tentacle, Dave, just a question. Did we not open this case the last time they were here, and this is a continuation?
We did not.
We did not?
I would accept it.
Okay, well, is it ready to be heard? A little delay, okay? I'd like to have a motion to...
I'll move to open.
Open the case. Move to second, if those in favor, please, voice vote. Aye? Gwen has joined us, she snuck in. Welcome.
I did, thank you.
Put those back.
All right, so, we may continue. We are now legal, it has been accepted, and the case is open.
Okay.
We continue, I just, the details, I'm sorry about that.
We'll be inserted into the medicine in the right place.
That's fine, so long as it's in the minutes, that's all I really care about. I don't really care about where it is in the minutes. So, if, if, what is the pleasure of the board at this point? Would you like me to proceed on to the waiver? Do you want to open up the public hearing to see if there's comments on the site review? How do you want me procedurally to handle this?
Let's go with discussion, and I'll open to the public, and then I'll bring it back to the board for your...
For the waiver?
To deal with waivers.
Okay, very good.
Please. So, any other questions that the board has at this point? Anybody from the public wish to come up and speak? If so, you know what? Speak up yourself, step up to the stand. Please introduce yourself, so our friends at home will know who's speaking. Seeing none, I'll close the public session, we'll go on to the waivers, please.
So, has, Dave Sharple's indicated, we are here for a waiver request from Section 9.13.1 to allow for parking, and the criteria, parking off-site. The criteria for this waiver request, which follows, as he has indicated, on the issuance of a variance for off-street parking from the ZBA. The first criteria, of course, is whether or not the granting of the waiver is going to be detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare, or injurious to the other property. Our position, as we provided, as we indicated to the ZBA, is that there is ample on-street parking in the nearby vicinity for the use of the residents of these 11 units, as well as their guests and so forth. In addition to that, there is available municipal parking lot parking, and there are designated parking spaces within some of those parking, those municipal lots, for use of residents during the winter months. That was a particular concern to the planning board, and so, we spent a great deal of time working with various members of the staff and of DPW to really identify and hone in on the number of parking spaces that would be available in these lots, and the number of designated spaces that could be used by our residents, as opposed, in addition to other members of the public during the event, of a snow event, and what would, what the process would be for increasing those number of designated spaces should that, should a need arise. And what we concluded from all of that is that, as is stated here, there is plenty of parking on the street, and also with the, with the designated parking spaces in the parking lots. I have, and I'll give it to you in a moment, a writing from Jennifer Perry of the Public Works Department, which lists out the actual numbers within the parking lots, and also describes the number of designated spaces, and the process to increase those designated spaces if need be. So, with all of that in mind, we believe that it is not detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare if this waiver is granted. The second criteria is whether or not there are aspects of this property that are unique, that are not applicable generally to other property. This property is formerly the First Baptist Church. It was a non-conforming use. The church was a tax-exempt entity, it's now going to be taxable. It has a very small driveway on the property, and the rest of the property is largely taken up by the structure. As I mentioned a moment ago, we are trying very diligently to preserve the building, and so that means that there's really not any way that we can provide surface parking to meet the parking needs of this proposal. In addition to that, as I mentioned a moment ago, too, the prospect of underground parking isn't viable, and so, if you, if you take those factors, the size of the lot, the size of the structure on the lot, the inability to be able to come up with some sort of an alternative arrangement, such as underground parking, that clearly means that this property is unique, and is not readily similar to other properties in the area. The third criteria is that because of the particular physical surroundings of the specific property, that there is a hardship to the owner that would result as distinguished from a mere inconvenience if the regulations were strictly carried out. So, as I've just stated, the building permit footprint does not allow for surface parking. Parking in, within the building, in terms of underground parking, is going to be impossible, really, or certainly very difficult, both because of the expense, and because of the nature of the foundations. We've also explored, but been unsuccessful, in identifying any shared parking opportunities, so we did exhaust those kinds of alternative efforts in our due diligence. And in addition to that, the uses which are permitted under the zoning ordinance for this zone, for this property, of those, the only use that would be, would be able to satisfy the parking requirements would be a single-family dwelling. And it is our position that it's just not viable to convert this building into one single-family dwelling in order to satisfy the parking requirements. So, given the fact that the zoning board has recently approved this use as a multifamily, and the fact that we need to be able to have that approved use now, have people be able to park somewhere, and the fact that it's not viable to do it onsite in one fashion or another, there would be a particular hardship, as opposed to an inconvenience, to the applicant here, if this waiver is not granted. The fourth waiver criteria is whether or not the waiver is going to be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulations. The intent of the waiver regulation is to determine whether or not it complies with the zoning regulations having to do with parking. And we, our position is that the intent of this waiver regulation, as well as the parking regulation on the zoning side of things, is to make sure that this particular proposal is not going to unnecessarily interfere with the parking needs of those in the neighborhood. And we believe that that is not the case, by virtue of the fact that, as I've mentioned before, there is lots of on-street parking for these 11 units, and there's lots of parking in municipal parking lots, including the designated spaces. I would like to, at this point, just before I forget, this is a memo, as I said, from Jennifer Perry. I know, I know this was mentioned in the zoning board minutes, so it's part of the ongoing record, but just to make sure that you have this in front of you, I'm going to hand this out now.
Thank you. Thank you.
Train station parking lot is relevant to this?
Yeah. And this, this list contains, I think, I think the really important things about this list is that it contains the list of the total spaces for overnight parking in the area, and some of them, obviously, are going to be much closer to our property than others. For example, the Center Street lot is probably the most, is the one that's going to be most serviced here. That in and of itself contains 11 spaces. The, I think the other critical point of this memo from Jennifer Perry is that she outlines the fact that the number of designated spaces is not necessarily cast in stone. So, in other words, she has a flexible outlook in terms of adding designated spaces to some of these other municipal parking lots, so that if there is a demand, in which there doesn't seem to be now, based upon the staff review of this, for these designated spaces, more can be allocated. So that, right now, there are, she indicates that there are 10 spaces at the Center Street lot, on the left-hand side of the lot, which could be transformed into designated parking spaces, and that would simply need to be done by agreement with the town manager and the select board, but I think it would, would come with a strong recommendation from the, from the DPW to be able to do that, should a need arise. There's also another four right in the center of that particular lot, and there's others available in other parking lots. So, I guess the takeaway for all of this is that through the efforts of the DPW, they have identified a number of overnight parking spaces in these various municipal lots that could be utilized by our owners and guests, as well as other members of the public, and that, and that could be done also during the winter months, which again, was a critical issue for the ZBA, and should a need arise to add to the number of designated spaces, that can readily be done. So, with that, the other, the last criteria is that the waiver's not going to vary the provisions of the zoning ordinance or the master plan. We know that this will not vary the provisions of the zoning ordinance, because we have been granted a variance, and the effect of that variance is to make us comply. The second thing is whether or not we vary the provisions of the master plan, and I've indicated to you, based upon my review of the 2018 master plan, that the, that indicated that, based upon a 2018 parking study, that they counted 400 parking spaces downtown, and that they noted that there would be potentially the need to study that parking availability downtown in the future. But right now, in terms of this criteria, your job is to look at the provisions of the master plan, and right now, the 2018 master plan suggests that there is adequate parking in the downtown, and the allowance of 24 off-site parking spaces is not going to interfere with that 2018 parking, parking plan. So, with that, and I also mentioned in here, and I think it is significant, too, is that the master plan, it's not all about just parking, but it also talks about the need to preserve historical features and cultural features, and so, one of the, one of the benefits of pursuing this project is that it is going to keep intact a beautiful historical building in the town of Exeter, and it's going to transform it into a new life. So, I'm happy to answer any questions which the board may have on the waiver, and/or any questions that might come if members of the public have questions.
I have a question. Could I clarify? So, you represented the Ioka properties, and those haven't been fully developed, and this was the same argument used for parking for down there? So, those haven't been utilized yet? How many units are going in there? Eight?
There are eight going in there.
So, there's 16 that hasn't been built yet?
That's correct.
And now, we're going to add 22?
Twenty-four.
I just want to make sure we're all...
Yes.
Keeping track.
Eleven units.
Right, but we're talking about 24 spaces for the former Baptist church, and 16 for the former Ioka, right? So, I just want to make sure we're keeping track of numbers here.
That is correct, but I think that those numbers need to be viewed in the context of the numbers that I just gave you, with regard to the availability.
I get that. I just want to make sure we're all remembering that we have the Ioka property that isn't done yet, and we also have parking spots that it's, we don't know how many people use these, because we don't give out permits. So, all things that I just want to keep in mind on our parking downtown, and in our units, and the Center Street, you know, the idea that we could turn more into Center Street, which would obviously be very helpful, but also would take up a whole parking lot if how many people bought, purchased those units don't leave during the day for work or things like that. So, this is a pretty...
Well, to be clear...
This is a complicated issue that's just become more complicated.
I, I don't, I understand and appreciate the complexity of any kind of parking issue in a downtown, but I also just want to make it clear, when I'm talking about designated parking spaces, that's designated solely, under your parking ordinance, that's designated solely for purposes of overnight parking during the winter months.
Absolutely.
And that does not create, you know, a right for either the residents at this particular project or anybody else to park. It simply, it cordons off a certain number of spaces in a municipal parking lot to be able to park overnight during the, during the winter months, under your ordinance.
And my point of view is that I need to keep in mind of the people that already live here, and who uses those spots, and my understanding from watching the other meetings that I did watch, there was no way of knowing how many people are utilizing the ones that we have right now, so as a select board member also, I have to keep in mind all the facts.
I understand.
So, to know where we're going to go with this, if we need to provide more parking and a different approach.
I understand that, and all I can say is that, I know that you have a, have a job to do, but I also know that, or I guess I just want to make sure the board understands that we spend a great deal of time speaking with DPW and other staff about the actual use, and, and yes, there may not be definitive figures, but I think we have some, some pretty good general observations on their part in terms of what the use is. So, with that.
You said we're just talking about the use overnight, so is there anyone else that these parking lots have been designated as overnight spaces for?
So, my understanding, just, is we have the Ioka properties coming in, we have an inn downtown, we have the apartments above the shops downtown, and on the side streets. I believe the only overnight parking that's permitted, when I say permitted, excuse me, that they actually get a permit for is along Charter Street. All the rest, it's first come, first served. Chester, Chestnut, thank you for that correction. Chestnut is above, it's Pleasant, yes. So, that one little section downtown on the other side of great, where the dam was... So that one little section downtown on the other side of great, where the dam was, that you have to have a permit for overnight. All the rest is first come, first served.
So this, Nancy seems to know, but, so these designated spaces.
Yeah.
Excuse me, this question's probably stupid, but I don't get out much. Are there signs up?
Yes, there are.
I've never seen the sign up, so I'm kind of curious.
Go to the Center Street parking, you'll see the signs right there.
But we don't have a list of, this homeowner gets this spot.
No.
It's a free-for-all, so we don't know if someone who, I mean, just anyone can park there?
Yes, yes, we do. Yeah, it's just making sure we're understanding the whole picture because it's complicated. This isn't about for or against anything.
No, no, but I'm trying to educate myself. I didn't know that.
Yes, no, I, because I've been.
We have no, I mean, Jennifer apparently keeps track of the parking spaces, but we don't keep track of who's parking.
We don't keep track of how many are being used, and it's for winter parking, right? So this conversation's come up, and there's no cameras or anything that keeps track of, and we wouldn't know again until December.
Then why do we do a permit on one street and not everywhere?
I haven't got an answer to that yet. So I still have an email out to the town manager and Jennifer Perry, just to ask if there's any more updated data, because they were talking about this during the zoning board meetings and things. So not to hijack your part, but I just want to make sure we all kind of know the complications of this.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Pete? David, can you help us recall what we did with Ioka? What conditions we had, if any, on that approval? I'm sorry to, but I'd like to try to find out how, what the actual language may have been with respect to that.
I, um.
Oh, I got them right here.
You got them? Okay.
I got them right here. We just had three conditions on them, on it, and it was electronic as-built, pre-con meeting, and outdoor lighting. We did not, they, you granted the waiver request on the parking, but you didn't do any stipulations or conditions regarding the parking.
So we really didn't address the problem for Ioka?
To the extent, to the extent you believe there's a problem, first, do you identify if there is?
We kind of kicked it down the road.
No. Can I tell you my?
All right. Refresh my recollection.
My recollection, and correct me if I'm wrong, was that the, for lack of a better word, argument was that because of the overnight parking available across the street, it was fine.
Not a problem.
Yeah, but this is cumulative.
That was my point, and that's the word I wasn't coming up with, thank you, Mr. Cameron. It's cumulative. And that's what I'm trying to stress, is this is cumulative. And if we, we're going to have this argument, do we have a parking problem, do we not have a parking problem? And we are creating, I think, potentially.
And the house next door is also using the municipal lot, is that not correct?
House next door to what?
The new building, not the house, I'm sorry, the new building, apartment building in back of the historic.
This one.
This one right here.
No, they have, they have parking spaces.
They have onsite parking.
But they needed to use the municipal lot, I remember.
One, one spot for each unit.
No.
No.
They never.
I thought that was, that was a big discussion.
They provided all the onsite parking that was required by our zoning ordinance.
On onsite.
They talked about cutting through and adding an entrance to there, and there was talk about, oh, they'd use that parking if that was the case. That was abandoned, and there's a fence up there now. So all the parking, I mean, whether they use the municipal lot, they might, I mean, guests might utilize it.
Guests might.
Or maybe some homeowners do because it's more convenient, I don't know.
They have guests.
But I'm not saying that they're allowed to.
Okay.
But they did provide all on-street.
Okay. I was mistaken, I was thinking that that was.
They provided nine spots, but I remember we gave them a variance for the width of those spots, so.
Yes, we did. So they fit.
And maybe one, one visitor spot.
May I address the, maybe kind of the overall parking? I mean, we're, we're here on one, on the site plan for 11, you know, multifamily units.
Yes.
And downtown, I've done a lot of parking counts and utilization rates in the downtown pre-COVID, and then COVID hit, and there was like no cars, and then they've slowly come back, not to the level of that they used to be. But there is, there is a lot of underutilized on-street parking in our downtown. So I have the numbers in my office, I'm not going to quote different percentages at different times, but, you know, Water Street, you know, is pretty much the highest utilization rate along with this municipal lot here. But a lot of the side streets, Elm Street, Spring Street are, you know, in the 50, 60%. At night, it's almost nothing. During the day, there is some PEA, people on, there's 40, I think 44 spots there, not marked, on Elm Street. That utilization rate is about 80% during the day for PEA, drops down to about 10% as soon as PEA lets out around 5:30, 6 o'clock. But the larger issue is, I understand, this is a great conversation, it's more of you have to look at holistically as the whole town when you, when you look at parking in downtown. The fact remains is, these kind of projects, you're going to see them, they, it's creating 11 units, and you're not, and you're not taking one tree down, you're not adding one square foot of impervious surface area, you're not adding any additional runoff or drainage. And when we add 11 units, I don't want to pick on a project, but we added 12 units not too long ago that added acres of impervious surface area. So as a planner, this is the kind of, you know, development we'll see. But from the parking standpoint, we put out a parking study, we wanted to do an analysis on the downtown, to look at that and start managing parking in downtown, not on a case-by-case issue, but on a holistic issue. And we put that forward, but it didn't get to the voters because the, you know, when it went through the process, it was, it was kind of like, we don't need that. So that was shelved, but I took it in the CIP, and I moved it from 2018, and then I had a bike and ped master plan, the complete streets, and this was in front of it. So the downtown parking analysis, ped and bike plan, and then the complete streets. But then when they, you know, the town said no, and they didn't put it forward to, move it to the voters, then I just threw it, and it's in the CIP, either for next year or the year after. So I think right now, there's plenty of on-street parking that's not being utilized. I don't want to name streets, but there's some streets right around here that, that have, you know, 20, 30, availability for 20, 30 cars, and there is one or two cars on them all day long. So there's plenty of, to me, there is parking around on-street available in the downtown, but we have to move it forward, we have to manage it. We have to use, you know, combination of permit parking, resident-only parking, and so forth. But you can't, I just, I don't see how you can do it on a, you know.
Case-by-case basis.
Case-by-case basis. You have to do it holistically. I love this conversation, I want to continue it.
Yes, me too.
I think it's more of a holistic approach, and we have a plan to address it.
Okay. Can I just follow up, please?
Sure.
So my concern more is the overnight, and this isn't about anything other than making sure we're all aware of what is happening, and, because we are going to need to address this in the future. That's the only place I was going with this. And yeah, we are fine during different times during the day. My only concern is the people buying this, or the people that already live here, and the winter parking ban, and where they're going to park during the winter.
No, agreed.
We need to be aware of it.
Agreed. And the DPW, to that end, the DPW is flexible on adding spaces to that.
I got the memo, yeah. Yep, I got the memo. And the one that was just saying.
And then we have, also, we have the, what's that lot called? The Boat Launch.
Boat Lot, yeah.
The lot. There's 29 spots down there, public spots, and four trailered spots, and there's opportunity there for overnight parking too. So we, and then we can get into a permit program, and I think we can address it.
I don't even know. I was just throwing that out there so we can keep track. But thank you, Mr. Chair.
It just sounds like we're all kind of in violent agreement that there's sufficient parking available, but that maybe for these projects, we just need to take a look and maybe designate across, so, some spots.
It's the conversation now?
Which is separate from this particular.
Yeah. To me, there's plenty of parking available.
But sooner rather than later, it should just be identifying spots for projects.
So your project just got, not hijacked, but we had to have a conversation about.
I understand, absolutely, and appreciate that. And I have nothing further to add beyond what Dave.
I just want to finish my statement. My concern is that the buyer beware that they're not going to be able to park right next to the building at their pleasure.
Absolutely, and we.
And as long as that's in place, the parking inventory's adequate. If we need more winter spaces, they can be made.
Right. We did have discussion about that very topic before the ZBA, and the answer simply is, it's a, it's a marketing issue, and it's on us, and it's on the buyer. So I completely agree with you. So.
So that's in the documents? You said that?
Yes, it's in the minutes.
No, 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 but this is going to be a homeowner's association.
This will be a condominium form of.
So it's going to be in that document.
That's correct.
So everyone will have read that.
Well, I can't promise that, but I write these things all the time, no one ever reads them.
Before they sign on the dotted line.
Pardon me?
I said they're supposed to have read it.
Florence, Florence has assured us that she will make sure the buyers know.
Florence says, "Read," you will read.
I'm happy to answer any further questions that the board may have.
Any further questions about this?
Mr. Chair, I have one more.
Yes.
I just have a quick question about trash pickup. It looks like in your drawings you have a dumpster, a new dumpster. Is that right? Okay, so there'll be a private, is that private trash pickup then? Okay.
No.
So those, I feel like I read somewhere that those, that little driveway would be used for parking, or would be available for parking, but if it's trash pickup, how would that work?
There are two spots, I think I read, too, there'd be two spots in the back.
Three cars.
By the dumpster.
I thought I saw that in the plane. I'm not sure what the question is.
The first space is going to look like a drop-off, and then so that probably won't be there all the time, so that would.
They'll still be able to have access to the trash, if that's what your question is?
I guess that's what my question is. Is that driveway going to be for trash pickup, or is it going to be for parking?
Both.
Both.
Both, it'll serve two purposes.
Okay.
Trash is scheduled.
There'll be a sign-up, don't park here.
Usually in the middle of the night, so.
Got it.
Well, and, well.
Do you want to?
It doesn't matter.
Right, okay.
Hmm.
Okay.
Is there a need to have an handicap spot available for, is there anything legally binding that requires you or not?
No.
I didn't, I couldn't remember if that was, hmm, okay.
Are we ready for a motion on the waiver? Before we do that, I have to tell you, I continue to be concerned. The cumulative effect, I'm troubled by the use of a variance here to exacerbate a problem. I'm not going to vote, I'll tell you right now, I'm not going to vote in favor of the waiver. So you'll at least have one negative vote, and I'll tell you in advance. And that's why I'm concerned. I just didn't want to have a quiet no. Okay, that's fine, thank you.
I'm struggling with that too, Peter. I mean, I like this project, I like that it's, it's kind of, we're infilling, we're doing something that's respecting the heritage of this beautiful building, and we're creating, creating new apartments, new housing. But I also am concerned about the cumulative effect, and that it's going to be on the backs of our taxpayers if at some point we're going to have to build a parking garage because we're lacking necessary parking.
This is progress, I guess, in my mind.
It's progress, but it's.
You only put so much milk in a bottle, and after that, you got to get two bottles or a bigger jug, yeah, you know?
So, so can we separate the issue of the cumulative parking problem, which I definitely understand, from maybe this particular project? Because they really are, they're related, but they're separate issues. But is there something this board can do separately to, to bring up maybe to the select board that, hey, we want to look at how many projects have we approved with how many spaces, and let's like, you know, set aside those spaces so they don't get double counted in the future? Is there a way we can do something as a board to put that in motion, separate from this project, because it's got so many other merits that we all recognize?
Yeah, I think they've addressed that.
We've had discussions on the Oversight Subcommittee about parking, and it kind of went by the wayside with the pandemic because there wasn't, the issue wasn't there, but we've talked about this in metering and everything else, so.
Yeah, I mean, we certainly have been conscious on the Oversight Committee, at least to this problem. And I think that you may have something more to say, Dave.
No, what I can do, I mean, that's a great point that Robin made, and I mean, I love your support to, you know, I'll, the CIP is just ramping up for, you know, the 2023 CIP submissions, we're submitting to the town manager, and then we'll meet with the department heads next month. So I would take that downtown parking and pedestrian flow analysis and put it into this year's CIP for funding in the '23, and we could get right on it, you know, within the year. I think it is, it was overdue, but then the pandemic hit, and our parking problems vanished overnight. I mean, we literally had 100% utilization rate every day at the train lot, and, you know, in the 77 stall parking lot by 8:00 AM, it was 100% full every day with 30 overflow cars out on Lincoln Street. COVID hit, and there were zero, zero, for months. And now you go over there, I just was over there the other day doing a count, and it's 23. So it, the parking problem did, and it hasn't recovered in a lot of spaces. But I think downtown is definitely warranted to look at. I don't see, you know, bumper-to-bumper situation, parking, can't find parking, people putting cones, fighting for parking spots in downtown Exeter. I don't, I don't see that right now. So we have time to plan for it, and I think it would be perfect to get your support to put, make a priority to put that plan in the CIP for funding in 2023, if that's what I'm hearing. So, and I think that would be good timing, and we can, we can look at permitting. And we would never build a parking garage, I would never recommend building a parking garage on, on the backs of taxpayers, because no one ever puts in a parking garage without having paid parking first. That is a, that is like a prerequisite. You don't just go and build a parking garage and try to pay, you know, and say, okay, and I'm going to, you do paid parking. And I'm not advocating paid parking, I'm not saying that's the solution, but it's a normal progression. If that's what you decide when you look at parking management and you institute paid parking, then you take, you get revenues from that to pay for itself and pay to help, you know, maintain the pedestrian flow and so forth. And then you look at your revenue, and then you would make a decision on a, on a parking garage, and you want to have the revenue to pay for the infrastructure. So you wouldn't, ideally, you don't want to go anywhere near the general fund to, or the general taxpayer to fund a parking garage.
So procedurally, then, could we vote on this project based on its merits, and then maybe vote on some kind of, whatever the right wording is, to ask you to go put this in the CIP for?
Absolutely. I mean, if you want to vote, great, that would be good.
And then that supports you?
Consent, consensus, whatever, I'll take whatever, yeah. But I think they're, they're definitely separate issues, but we will address the bigger issue. We've been working on it, and we're on the cusp of doing it, and then the pandemic kind of changed things, but we're back to looking at it.
We can also do that under other business tonight.
Okay. So could I just say that when I do my select board report on Tuesday night, I'll just, I'm going to just let them know this conversation happened, just to let people know it's being talked about. But also, I've also struggled about this with Gwen and Pete, but the Department of Public Works also gave us a Plan B if we need to add some more overnight parkings, at least for now. I just see this as being a big, a bigger problem later, but I'm fine with that.
Let me make it clear, I'm not, the project is a superb project, and I don't want you to think that I'm opposed to the project, and that's why the splitting becomes important. And so I, your project is a good one. I don't want you to think that that's my problem.
I don't, I know.
Okay, as long as, as long as the board is clear.
Mm-hmm.
And the record will be clear.
Excellent.
Okay. I think we're ready for a motion, John.
It's my turn again. Where is the motion? Who's going to, who's going to, oh, you do.
That's Pete's copy.
It's the bottom of the memo?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, my memo's in the middle of my paperwork.
He's got it right here.
You want the waiver motion first?
Just the waiver motion. We have to do, deal with the waiver first, yeah.
Yes.
There's an order.
Okay, motion, parking spaces, number required motion, okay. After reviewing the criteria for granting waivers, I move that the request of Exxonian, is that how you say it? Exxonian Properties LLC Planning Board, case number 22-6, for waiver of section 9-13.1. to permit less off-street parking than required in accordance with Section 5.6.6 of the zoning ordinance be approved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Thank you. Any discussion? We do a pro-call vote, please. So let's start with you, Gwen, please.
Great.
I didn't know whether to start there or here.
You can wait. I can go the other way.
Go the other way. I'm still thinking.
See, that would be Nancy.
Aye.
Aye.
Did I? Pete, you want more time?
Yes.
Aye.
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 Gwen?
Well, I'm, I'm still a little troubled, so I'm going to, I'm probably going to go with Pete.
Whatever I do.
Just to, just to express my concern. It's going to go through anyway.
Is that your final answer?
Yes, it's my final answer.
Final answer.
Gwen, I'm going to abstain.
Oh, you're going to abstain. Okay. Well, that's fine.
All right.
Just to make it clear.
It's 5-1-1.
So 5-1-1.
Okay.
5-1-1. Yes.
Thank you, Ling.
The motion, Mary.
I didn't, I didn't mean to undercut you.
One more.
All right. Minus site plan motion?
Minus site plan motion. Dave, guess what?
I got suggested conditions of approval if you're willing to listen to them.
Sure.
Oh.
No, Pete wants to do it.
But Dave has something to say first.
Yes, okay.
There's three. One, a DWG file of the plan shall be provided to the town planner showing all property lines of monumentation prior to signing the final plans. This plan must be in a DWG or DFX file format and an NAD 1983 State Plain New Hampshire FIPS 2,800 feet coordinates. Two, a pre-con meeting shall be arranged by the applicant and his contractor with the town engineer prior to any work commencing. And, oh, and, Skyline and, all outdoor lighting, including security lights, shall be downlit and shielded so no direct light is visible from adjacent properties and/or roadways. And the fencing around the bottom of the stairs on Front Street will be removed.
Fencing of the gate.
The gate.
Fencing of the gate.
The fencing. There's, there's three panels of fencing at the bottom. You walk down to the bottom of the stairs and there's two panels and a gate.
Not the fencing up above. Okay.
So those two little U-shaped things at the bottom of each of those stairs on Court Street, on Front Street will be removed.
Those are little pigpens. Okay.
Are we ready?
Is that? Okay. So we're ready for the motion now.
I move that the request of Exxonian Properties LLC Planning Board Case Number, sorry, 22-6 for a minor site plan approval be approved with the following conditions as stated by our town planner, Dave Sharple.
Second.
Any discussion? Would you like to start this one, Gwen?
I'll say aye.
Aye.
Robin?
Aye.
John? Aye.
Resounding aye.
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 Your name is vote. Congratulations.
Thank you.
We appreciate the good work.
Thank you for saving the church.
Thank you. Keeping the church in the town. Okay.
Actually, this is short.
You buy a place and you go to heaven.
It's an overall number though.
Yeah. Okay.
That's the problem.
Our next item is application of PSNH.
Oh, I have to, before, Mr. Chairman, I have to recuse myself.
Okay.
From this, oh, the board permitted me to sit here or they want me to go sit in the peanut gallery.
Be comfortable, Pete. You're fine.
Are you putting me in the peanut gallery?
No.
The back bench?
Go to sea dog.
The only reason that, for the board, I, I worked for PSNH for a number of years. So that's why I feel like.
Okay.
And we lost our town planner.
And as long as you keep quiet, you may stay comfortably where you are.
Few minutes, two.
Application of PSNH DBA EverSource Energy for the wetland and shoreline conditional use permits for the proposed maintenance slash repair activities along existing A126 transmission line and the replacement of five transmission structures within the limits of the existing ROW corridor between Route 101 eastbound and the Exeter/Brentwood Town Line and approximately 1,500 feet west of the Captain's Way, parenthesis to the west of Newfields Road/NH Route 85, close parenthesis. Subject properties are located in the RU Rural and R1 Low Density Residential Zoning Districts, tax map parcels number 25-1, 20-8, 24-3, 30-9, 30-8, and as planning board case number 22-7. And David, is this ready to be heard?
In my opinion, it is.
Okay. Would somebody like to make a motion for us to hear it?
So moved.
Thank you. Just a second?
Second.
Okay. Voice vote, those of you who please indicate for saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Nay? Extinctions? The ayes have it. Dave, you got a preamble, please?
I do. The applicant is seeking a wetlands conditional use and a shoreline conditional use permit for maintenance slash repair activities along the existing A126 transmission line through Exeter and, which includes the replacement of five transmission structures within the limits of the existing right-of-way corridor between 101 eastbound and the Exeter/Brentwood Town Line and approximately 1,500 feet west of Captain's Way. And as you said, the subject properties kind of go through the RU and the R1 district. The applicant did submit plans and supporting documents which are enclosed for your review in your packets. The applicant did appear before the Conservation Commission at their May 10th meeting, presented their proposal. The commission had no objection to either of the applications and recommended approval with the sole condition that the trail closure and notification be coordinated with Natural Resource Planner Kristen Murphy prior to the commencement of work. Because there is a trail out there, so they will have to close that or a portion of it during construction. So that was their only condition. And I provided the, the letter from the chairman, Andrew Koff, the Exeter Conservation Commission dated May 18th that outlines the condition and recommends approval of both permits. There was no TRC for this because it was a repair maintenance, you know, they're not exposing any stormwater, no impervious surface area. Basically, it's a, kind of mostly a routine maintenance, repair activities and rebuilding of transmission structures. So, but no waivers are being requested and we didn't, you know, no, no staff had any issues with the proposal. So. That's all I have. Mr. Chairman?
Yes, okay. Have we somebody to present to us? Oh, thank you. Wait for the microphone. The boy's on his way.
All right. Good evening. My name is Chris Wilks. I work for VHB. I'm representing EverSource on this project for environmental permitting and compliance for both at the state and local level. So David gave a good background and introduction to the work. We did come here just two weeks ago in front of the Conservation Commission and walked through the whole approach to the project this year. I'm happy to kind of run through some background and sort of how we do this work on an annual basis. If you recall, we were here last year in front of you for structure replacement work that happened between, basically on the east side or west side of, westbound 101. So between westbound 101 and Route 27, there is, I believe there's three structure replacements there and one structure removal that we did. They included the structure that was right off the shoulder of 101 westbound. So I feel like we just saw you guys not too long ago. And this year, on an annual basis, basically EverSource goes out. They inspect their overhead line and their infrastructure and they identify transmission line structures that have been in the ground for over 40 or 50 years. They're wood pole structures, so they're subject to weathering, internal rot, a lot of times woodpecker damage. And so every year, over the course of these inspections, they identify structures that they want to replace. And it's part of their overall reliability effort throughout the state to basically prevent outages and customer disruptions. So here, this year, we have five structures that we're replacing, as David mentioned. We're basically kind of picking up where we left off last year. So we're working on the, just off the eastbound side of 101, between eastbound 101 and the Town Line. So that's kind of wedged between Pine Road and Brentwood and 101. We have a total of five structure replacements that are happening there. I'm sorry, three, because two are in Brentwood. If you have your maps in front of you that will depict that section. And essentially, we're planning on coming off of Pine Road and Brentwood to access the right-of-way. There's an existing trail that comes off the road that's gated, that's definitely been used in the past for utility work, goes right down to the right-of-way and provides perfect access for them to get out there. It also avoids the use of coming off of Route 101 at that location, which is, you know, there's obvious safety concerns with that. There's a lot of coordination that has to go into that process with DOT. There's a guardrail there as well. So we're trying to avoid that clearly. And the easiest way is to come in from Pine Road. Just for your knowledge, we did go in front of the Brentwood Planning Board and Conservation Commission last month and we received our approvals for, for work in their town, which is directly abutting the work in Exeter this year. So there's three structures there. I can get into sort of the natural resource impacts if you're interested in that. Essentially, this work is routine for EverSource at this point. They have best management practices that they're, you know, they provide to their contractors they're required to comply with. Includes timber matting to get across wetland areas and streams. I'm sure you guys potentially have seen that before. They're four by 16-foot platforms that they lay out and they basically create a boardwalk over the existing ground surface. Gets them through the wetland without rutting the ground, disturbing, exposing soils, reduces erosion. And essentially, they're able to pull those mats out at the end of the work. And most often, the vegetation within the right-of-way just rebounds on its own. You know, it's very dense vegetation out there and it quickly comes back typically without any real seeding or planting efforts needed. In addition to the timber matting, we, they often install erosion controls. So that's to prevent, you know, if they start construction and we get a two-inch rain event, that sediment laid in stormwater is in, discharging from their work areas into sensitive resources like wetlands and streams. And those controls are typically like silt fence or silt sock. So they, those are outlined on these plans as well. And then the boxes around the structures themselves just basically represent the work area, or we call it the work pad, that is, we estimate is required for them to safely stage their equipment to conduct the structure replacement work. So often those are about 100 by 100-foot areas. And that's where the equipment sets up, takes the old structures out and installs the new structures. So the new structures are weathered steel, so same configuration that's out there. There are two pole H-frame structures, so two poles with a cross brace. They'll be replaced relatively in kind, same configuration with weathered steel, which is like a brown color. It looks pretty similar and it, you know, blends into the landscape as best as it can for this type of infrastructure. All the structure work is usually like direct embedment, doesn't require, you know, major drilling or excavation work often. And, you know, all the old material is pulled out of the right-of-way at the end of the job and removed and disposed properly. And the other location that's subject to the work this year is in just west of Captain's Way. There's two structures there, Structure 166 and 167 that are proposed to be replaced similar to the other segment. They've been identified as deteriorating and requiring replacement. So same situation there. We're going to come off of Captain's Way. And there's only one wetland system that we do encounter near Structure 166. There's a stream that sort of comes into the wetland and exits and it's sort of diffuse within the right-of-way. So it's not well-defined. But we do plan on using timber matting to cross that wetland to minimize impacts. And then that will get us over to Structure 167. That's entirely within upland that will be replaced. This is a section that David mentioned, the Conservation Commission had concerns relative to a trail system that exists out there. And I know that EverSource, I have Jeremy Fennell from EverSource here tonight. I know that since that meeting, their outreach department has been in touch with Kristen Murphy on making sure that those concerns are addressed in terms of the trail closure, the timing of the work and that, you know, we can safely be out there and not, you know, cause any potential risk to the public. So that's kind of the background. What we're here obviously for is a conditional use permit to impact the Wetland Conservation District as a result of the matting, the access to work within the 40-foot buffers to wetlands and direct temporary impacts to wetlands themselves. And then because of that stream system that's off of Captain's Way, we are within the shoreline district. And so we have impacts from the work within the 150-foot buffer to that stream that we are looking for approval to, as conditional use approval to complete that work. What else? I guess the only other thing is we are seeking state permit approvals as we do for this work. So we're in the process of gaining those and those will be obtained and approved prior to the work starting. Because it's maintenance, repair, replacement work, it's subject to sort of a streamlined permit process with DES, called a statutory permit by notification. So we are pursuing those permits and it's a by-town situation. So one for Exeter, one for Brentwood. And again, in order to get approval by the state, we're required to address impacts, best management practices, rare species concerns and construction practice as well in terms of compliance to, you know, recommended approaches by DES to minimize impact. So. I think that's all I have for you guys. I'm happy to get into any specifics that I described if you'd like.
Any questions?
Go ahead.
Just a couple of questions. And I'm sure that the Conservation, Conservation Commission has addressed this and I'm sure it will get vetted through DES. But, and I think I've asked this of you before when you were here the last time. But do you use, do you use like a natural resource database to determine what is out, potentially out in this area as far as endangered species or, or is it boots on the ground and?
Yeah. So for the rare species, we're required to submit an online request to the Heritage Bureau, the Natural Heritage Bureau, for a report that they issue that basically identifies known records of rare plants or animals or natural communities within a certain, you know, like it's a half-mile buffer to the project work. So that's the basis of, that triggers our, our coordination. We get that report. For this, we had a couple of rare turtle species, I believe, snake, the black racer, and a, the pie-billed grebe, which is a bird species. And I believe for the most part, those records were clustered around the Deer, Deer Hill Wildlife Management Area in Brentwood, which is close by on the other side of Pine Road. So most of those records were, you know, clustered there, especially the bird because it requires open water habitat and it's, that area provides suitable habitat for that species and for turtles. So from there, we engage with, you know, because there was no plants identified this year. So then we go to Fish and Game because it's all animal records. And we engage with them on coming up with sort of a strategy and a recommended or approved list of best management practices that they're comfortable with, that we put forth during construction. And so often that involves, and it will involve for this project, that we train the contractor before the start of the work. We make them aware of the species. before the start of the work, we make them aware of the species that potentially they can encounter. We emphasize, you know, immediate reporting if something is sighted, and that would go to me as their environmental representative for EverSource, or Jeremy, who's in their environmental department, and that we would engage with Fish and Game. So it's reporting, training. We also stress that they need to do like a visual sweep of their work areas prior to really starting for the day, to ensure that there's nothing that's sitting on a timber mat, or, you know, they may potentially impact by driving equipment over an area. So we do visual sweeps, and then we're probably also going to have some level of wildlife exclusionary fencing that's put up, which is essentially meant to keep stuff out of the work area. So we established that, you know, early on in the project, and that's like silt fence that's put up, you know, entrenched in the ground, and it prevents anything from coming into the workspace. And Fish and Game really likes that, to see that, so, you know, everything we do is driven by Fish and Game's requests in terms of rare species.
Do they advise on the timing of it? It sounds like you're doing this in July.
Yeah, so often the time of year is critical in terms of certain species and their breeding or nesting, you know, preference. So because we're in July, I think is the timeframe, there's a bit more of, you know, that list that we'll have to adhere to gets longer because of that. So there's probably going to be a heightened level of oversight, because we're in the middle of the summer season, and those turtles and snakes are pretty active during that time. You know, we can often avoid that by doing winter construction, but then we run into trying to do work in the middle of, you know, New England winter, and that's difficult in its own right. So we will, that is part of the discussion we have with them, is, you know, that time of year and how we manage that.
Is that, I don't want to belabor this, but is that when the last project that you had, I don't, I don't think it was in July, but...
No, it was in the fall time, I believe. Yeah, late, late fall, like October, I think we started, so...
But you really can't, for a reason, you can't do that this year.
It really is dictated, the work is dictated by a complex network of outages, you know, that is given to EverSource by the regulators and the people who manage the transmission systems in New England. So they kind of, they're very confined to that outage window, and sometimes it's in the fall, but sometimes it, you know, it's in the summer, and the work's got to get done regardless. So this time around, it's July.
That's unfortunate.
Yeah.
Okay. I guess my last question is, so that these steel poles could be five to 20 feet taller than the existing poles?
Yep. Yeah. I will say that, I don't, I don't think I have the work list on me, but I will say that I believe out of the five, I think, you know, like three or four of them were going to be five feet, five to 10 feet. I think the 20-foot is actually the structure over the highway, so because it's a larger, you know, it's a highway crossing, there's requirements to get up to a certain standard for overhead clearance.
Okay.
And I believe that's the structure that's going to be the tallest, and it would match into what was replaced last year on the other side of the road, so...
Great. Yeah, 20 feet kind of caught my attention.
Yeah.
Why are we doing 20 feet taller than 20 feet over what you already have? Okay. Thank you for that. I guess my only wish is that this wasn't having to be done in July, but obviously that's, there's too much that's involved in trying to change that, so. All right. Thank you, Ling.
Yeah, sure. Well, it's good to know that Fish and Game is very much involved.
Yeah.
Yeah. Anybody else? Any other questions?
I just have a quick question. On the Captain's Way access piece, where would your, like, kind of lay-down area be occurring?
Do you know? Do you have thoughts on that?
Yeah, so, so Jeremy, you know, licensing permitting. Yeah, so I think with our lay-down area...
Could you introduce yourself, please, sir?
I can do it again. Jeremy Fennell, licensing and permitting for EverSource.
Thank you.
So, see my name signed on the applications. Yeah, so as far as these lay-down areas, we have areas around, like, we have areas like the, you know, other, that we would, basically, you know, we already have them established, we'll, you know, take them off the materials, off the flatbed trailers and things like that. And then, since this is only two structures, we'll deliver the poles, usually come in sections of two or three poles, a little bit of hardware directly to the work pads. So we really shouldn't need much of a staging area for these structures.
Okay.
Yeah. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, it does. I just, I remember when you guys were out, it was probably three years ago, at the Watson Road Trailhead, I don't know if you were involved with that one.
I remember that one, yeah.
Yeah, so I live, I go past there several times a day, and I just remember there was like a pile of gravel or dirt or something from the construction.
Yeah.
And there were a lot of trucks, like, when they were actually doing the work, there were a lot of trucks kind of parked at the trailhead during the day, and there was just like pile, like a couple piles of like stuff, construction stuff.
That was a tough one.
Sat there for a long time.
Yeah, that's a little bit different, yeah.
Yeah, I remember that one. I think the heightened level of material and activity at that spot was simply a result of, because that structure is literally like right on the parking lot. So, you know, the work pad really was part of, part of the work pad, it had to be the parking lot essentially.
Okay.
Because we just, I remember just coming, coming off of that trailhead, like, right to trail, and it's, the structure was right there.
Yeah, right there, yep.
So I do remember the material was, you know, had been there for a while, because I go out and do inspections for, on behalf of EverSource, to ensure like stuff like that gets addressed. So if there's stuff that's left behind, you know, it goes in a report, gets sent to the contractor, make sure that they take care of it. So I think they eventually got the stuff out of that.
They did, yeah.
But it did, took a little while.
Okay, yeah, I was just concerned, because this is, you know, a pretty, this is a family, lots of kids, and you just, you get concerned about kids getting into that kind of stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we could bring a little bit of material here just for some appropriate gravel for the access road work pads, but I think like Chris said, that was a little bit of a special situation. We, you know, we've been working with the Conservation Commission, because we understand like it's a used, you know, people live there, obviously, it's a residential road, and also there's a mountain bike trail, so we're definitely making sure we can be as sensitive as possible and, you know, signage and, you know, getting our work done, but, you know, working with the neighbors.
Yeah. I'm sure if anyone has an issue, they'll, they'll let you know.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Does anybody in the public have a question? So please step to the microphone and introduce yourself, so our friends can see us, and see you at home, know who they're watching. Seeing none, then I'll bring it back to the board. Any other questions the board has, or are we ready to move with the...
Yeah, I was part of the Conservation Commission meeting, so I'm all set.
Okay, good. So we have a couple things here, conditional use permit wetlands motion.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
Does the, the condition, it just gets referenced from the memo from the Conservation Commission when we talk about the wetlands conditional use permit?
I would recommend that you incorporate into the...
That's what I was trying to ask.
...for approval, if you so make one, to, as a condition to the wetland conditional use permit. And you just made, you have one condition to the wetland.
So can I give it a try?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, thank you. So I move, after reviewing the criteria for wetlands conditional use permit, I move that the request of PSNH EverSource Energy Planning Board Case Number 227, 22-7, for a conditional use permit be approved with the following conditions. As stated in the May 18, 2022 memo from Andrew Coff, Chair of the Exeter Conservation Commission specifically, the Commission recommended approval of the wetland conditional use permit, with the condition that the trail closure notification be coordinated with Natural Resource Planner Kristin Murphy prior to the commencement of work.
Second.
Move in seconded. Any discussion? Thank you, Nancy, nice job.
Thank you.
Okay. Would you like to start? We're going to do a roll call vote, Nancy?
Yeah. Aye.
Aye.
Pete. Oh, you can't. Well, thank you for being quiet. I'm just checking. Aye?
I mean, a recue, so...
Aye.
Okay. So it's a vote of those that are able to vote, so it's a unanimous vote, so it is approved. And the next one would be the Shoreland motion.
After reviewing the criteria for Shoreland conditional use permit, I move that the request of PSNH EverSource Energy Planning Board Case Number 22-7 for a conditional use permit be approved.
Second.
Second.
Move in seconded, okay. Call the vote. Again, Gwen, let's start with you this time.
I'm, I'm going to be stupid here for a minute. This includes the, in the packet, the conditional use permit criteria. Oh, wait a minute.
This is for the one by Captain's Way.
This is right. Never mind, never mind. I just figured it out.
Okay.
Smart.
Are you ready to vote?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Robyn?
Aye.
Sean? Aye?
Aye.
Okay. Anybody who can vote has, unanimous? It's approved? We thank you.
Thank you.
We thank you for your thoroughness. All right. And a lot of people don't understand, when you see people working out there, everything that goes into that process.
It involves a lot, yeah.
The government regulating the government. It's great, great game. Thank you, gentlemen.
Pay my pension.
Okay, you're back.
You're back, yeah.
Should you have your time off? All right.
Can I come back?
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, can I come back?
You may come back. You're welcome to come back. You're reseated, yep. Okay, this is a public hearing. Next item on the business, I call it a courtesy call, because we have no particular authority, but we are asked for our opinions. So it's a public hearing in accordance with NHRSA 674:54 for review of a proposed by, proposal by Friends of Coastal Waters to utilize an existing building located at Two Holland Way for an educational facility. The subject property is located in the C2 Corporate Technology Park Zoning District, Tax Map Parcel Number 69-2, and it's Case Number 22-8. And David, do you have some comments to start us off?
I do, thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you stated, the Friends of Coastal Waters submitted a letter, or FX Bruton submitted a letter on their behalf dated May 11th, in accordance with the RSA, because they are proposing a public charter school at Two Holland Way. And this, they are an agent of the state, and under RSA 674:54 governmental land uses, they are exempt from our land use regulations. However, they are required to provide the planning board notice 60 days prior to construction, which they did, and then they will, and then we decide, the planning board decides to hold a public hearing or not. We had that discussion at the last meeting, you have the right to hold a public hearing, not the obligation. So you had voted to hold this public hearing, so they are here tonight to answer any questions, and it's your public, you know, public hearing. There's no opening of the case, there's no acceptance of jurisdiction, because you don't have jurisdiction, but you are free to hold a public hearing, hear from folks, and issue any non-binding comments you may, you know, you may choose to issue. One of the impetus behind the planning board voting to hold the public hearing was to notify abutters. While there was no, well, there's no requirement to, like, send a butter notification in the state law, you know, it's just the two public places, the library and the town hall, you notice the meeting. But the applicant did agree to reimburse us, and we did send out first-class mail to all the abutters of the property notifying them of the, of the hearing. So there may, may be folks here to address it, so. If you, you know, at the end of the, if you want to, you know, make a motion to issue some non-binding comments, I'd be happy to, you know, record them, and we can get, you know, we can get a statement out to that effect. And also, on behalf of the applicant, we had discussed it today, they also do the same procedure for the select board, and I will be bringing that letter to the select board for their Tuesday night meeting, and they'll kind of go through the same, you know, the same process of deliberation on a hearing, on a potential hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. And is it Mr. Burton we have? Yes. Florence, the microphone's yours as soon as it gets there. Thank you for your patience.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the board.
You've seen democracy in action. Young man, I'm back there.
Yeah.
It's not exciting, but...
We encourage him to sit through your whole meeting. See how this works and watch the splendor of our democracy. In any event, my name is FX Bruton, I'm with Bruton and Barrowby. I'm pleased to be here on behalf of Friends of Coastal Waters. It's a chartered school, which means it's a public school, and it's open to students in Exeter and the seacoast area with no tuition being charged. That's how a charter school works, they get reimbursed by the state. They basically serve as if they were a school in Exeter that's public, which of course is what they are. And as Dave basically summarized everything that I might want to say, so I'll not be redundant, but I did want to thank the board for inviting us here. We did provide you with the information with respect to what we're going to do. Basically, they found an excellent spot that's already existing, and so we won't have to do any exterior modifications to the building, they'll just move some walls to set up the classrooms. But we're happy to answer your questions. With me tonight is Bill Libby, and he's right behind me, and he's the chair of the school board. And we did talk through and look at the project and proposed use with an engineer, Steve Height, who is here as well, if you have any questions. So again, this is a different meeting than I'm used to. I'm used to obviously being in front of you, asking for approval, but it is a process that the statute set up, and we're happy to do it. So we're here for any comments or questions that you might have, and I'll kind of leave it at that, unless you have any questions of me.
Okay.
Thank you.
Gwen, you have a question?
Just a couple of questions. It's hard to, hard to see from this one aerial view, but, and I didn't feel it was appropriate to go and drive around the site, but I'm just curious about parking and drop-off and pickup of children.
Yeah, we've created a staggered system, so that the school will utilize an appropriate way of obviously taking care of the students. We did look at that, and Steve can talk very, you know, briefly about that, but we did look to make sure that we would move forward with that in mind. So I'll yield to Steve, and he'll give you a little sense of that.
Good evening, Steve Height with Civil Works. So we took a look at the stacking ability on the site itself, and the way the site is set up, it's actually pretty conducive to bringing people on. It's all a right-hand turn-in, goes in, goes under the porcupine share, would be the drop-off, so you get a little over 20 cars stacking onsite alone. And this site is really actually set up pretty much exactly how you'd want to set up for a site this way. We actually have a right-hand turn lane off of the road, Holland Way coming into the site, and right before that, for that whole section, it's about 200 or 300 feet of section, you have a widened shoulder, which is actually striped off as well. So with the, with the staggered delivery and pickup of children, 20 cars onsite is adequate for what they need to do. If there happens to be a little backup, there's enough room right as you get onto the site off the travelway as well, to be able to do that as well. So this actually, the site as it situates right now is actually pretty well situated and set up for what they're proposing to do.
And adequate parking for seniors who may or may not have cars in certain...
There's, I think, kind of this over...
It's gotta be a huge parking. It's so hard to tell from this what's parking and what is just impervious surface for whatever reason, but, okay.
Well, it was, it was a manufacturing facility, so there was, there's well over 50 parking spaces onsite itself. So there's plenty of, and there's no need to, to increase that for what they're looking to do.
Okay. Mike, I just have one other quick question. Are, are there areas on this property for kids to have, like, a, like playground or athletic fields? I can't talk tonight for some reason. Or athletic fields, and if, what are the plans along those lines?
Have them explain that.
Okay.
There is some actually open space out there as well. How they utilize it is gonna be kinda dictated by what they have for student population.
Yeah.
Bill Libby, board chair for Friends of Coastal Waters. So down in the property, there's actually a big open green space that I would say is almost 100 yards by 100 yards that would be used for some outside play. There's also a, an old helicopter pad, which is the impervious spot that you saw down there at the end.
Oh, okay.
Which would be used for some hardtop outside activities as well.
Hmm.
And there's also actually some woods and some, there's a pond and woods around that that we'd be using for trails and walking around as well.
Okay. So you're really not gonna have to create new spaces by cutting down trees or anything?
No.
It's already there?
It's already there.
Wow, okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Go ahead.
So if I understand right, it just looks like inside you're creating less hallway or consolidating spaces to make classroom sizes, is that?
Um, a bit, yeah. We're, we're taking, right now it's all office space, so we're taking down walls and trying to limit the number of walls that we're taking down, and we're using those walls. And it would create, right now, the hallways in there, I don't know, they're probably like, seem like 12 feet wide.
Yeah, they look huge.
So, yeah, so we'll be making those smaller down to about 6 feet.
Okay. Is there plans at some point to, to expand beyond that, or is this gonna be sufficient for...
Uh, this'll be sufficient for now.
Okay.
Yep.
My turn, okay. In addition to the classrooms, what about the restrooms? In between classes?
So there are actually...
There's one on each floor.
Yeah, there's a male and female on the top floor and the bottom floor, and then actually down on the, each floor where there's a, there's actually the old CEO office, there's a restroom in there that we're gonna have as a, a non-binary bathroom, and then we're gonna create one on the first floor as well.
Opening in the fall?
That's the plan.
That's the plan.
Yep.
Good luck.
Thank you.
That's fast.
And could you tell us a little about grade levels that you're looking to serve?
Uh, we'll be serving K through 12.
K through 12.
Yep, one, one class for each grade. And we will be, kindergarten is limited to 20 students per our charter, and 25 students for each of the grades, 1 through 12.
Any questions, Pete?
Yes.
Moving down the table?
That's a troubled intersection for me.
Holland Way on...
Yeah, well, Holland Way and Hampton Road, and there's a lot coming on, off and on. Those, for instance, heading east on Hampton Road, they're gonna have to make a left-hand turn to get on to Holland Way, and then a sharp right-hand turn to get into your facility. Is that, have I mixed up on how that works?
It depends on what direction they're coming from, right? So there may be some, some people from Exeter or towns nearby that would have to come that way. There'll be people probably coming from the other way that are turning right onto Holland Way and then right into the parking lot.
And then people coming east on Holland Way, they're gonna make a left turn off Holland Way to get in there?
That's the toughest turn.
Yeah, I mean, this, it...
In certain times of the day.
Yeah, you're gonna have things stacked up, I think, but I'm not sure. I've gotten caught there, I won't say caught, but a couple of times I've been caught in a stack. And would parents decide they're going to bring their kids to school, if you have 150 or more students, or you want more, obviously, I guess I have to say that intersection just bothers me, because, particularly by people speeding, coming on Hampton Way around, when I say speeding, 35 or so, it just, I'm, I'm just a little queasy about that, but that, we can't do anything really, other than to make you aware of at least one board member's concern about that.
And, and we appreciate that, and that's something that we will keep in mind, and that's something that we continue to look at and talk about. And that's something, as we start the school, communicating with parents to try to have the best flow of traffic, to try to limit those situations.
And as a follow-up, that you don't have school buses, right?
We do not have school buses.
Parents getting in. Hopefully, there's some carpooling going on.
There's some carpooling, there's, there's potential plans of working with some funding to get some buses that we can meet some students in locations and, and bring in some students that way, which would then take away some of the stacking. We're also looking, as FX had mentioned, staggering the times. So, for example, in the morning, 8, 8:15 and 8:30, which will split up, and we won't have 150 cars all at once, it'll be more like 50 or 60 at a time.
Have you considered kind of trying to coordinate it and with all those kids going to the co-op middle school, just so that you're not all headed in that direction? And you're gonna have kids going to the middle school from downtown Exeter and from other parts of Exeter, so do you wanna try not to have your school starting at the same time that the middle school starts, or is that, I don't know how much flexibility you have or want to have in your day, your academic day?
Right, I mean, I, I think timing is, is something we are continuing to look at and consider as, as a group, because the staggering and the stacking and making that impact, we don't wanna cause more issues.
Right. And you've got, what, 240, 230 kids coming, so, and that's just a, that's a busy time of morning, as you know, I'm sure.
So I don't know if it's a question for Dave or for the state, but is there a requirement to have a school zone sign, just like you were talking about, just the traffic kinda zipping by there? I mean, obviously you can't go plant a school zone sign, but I'm just wondering if...
That would be something with highway, PWD. I wouldn't have any involvement in that.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, we'd be happy to talk with them as far as the sign and... Everyone's gonna be in a school zone, see the school.
Yeah, I, I would think at least a typical school sign on the highway, yes.
That'd be a good idea.
That'd be good, you know, are you, are you planning a sign, a name of the school sign?
Yeah.
Or sign for the school? I don't know how to say that.
Right, right. Coastal Waters Charter Public School will be the name, is the name of the school, and that's what we'll have out there.
Yeah.
Yep.
You all set now, Pete?
I'm right now.
Okay. Jen, did you have any questions?
No, I think it's, it's an exciting project. I'm happy to see it.
You're gonna get a turn next, next week, so no, do you have a question this time?
I was gonna say, really? You're gonna, so I'm glad you came tonight, so it gives us a chance to meet some of you and get some background. All of my questions actually were answered. The school bus, just reiterate that intersection, to please keep an eye on that area because, and before and after school from Middle Street, getting around, please. Thank you.
Yep, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Quick enough?
On, on the safety side of the chart here, at, because I don't understand that you, I understand some laws you don't have following, I don't know if there's others, but what I'm getting at is, is safety. Will the fire department do inspections there? Are you gonna have your fire extinguishers, electric code, is that gonna be, that, those kinds of things that a public school has to go through?
Yes, we have to get approval from the state fire marshal before we can open.
Okay.
And we have to get approvals from state fire marshal.
Well, local land use regulations, you don't have a building permit, they have to meet life safety codes, so, they just, as I explained at the last meeting, they're exempt from the site plan review process.
Right.
But they still have to meet all the buildings, life safety, electrical codes, and so, when they build, you know.
I'm assuming so, but, yep.
Yeah.
Anything else? Do we have any recommendations or suggestions?
Did you, you should open the public hearing.
Oh, that's right, anybody in the public, they must have some people who like to speak. Just step up and please introduce yourselves, sir.
My name is Paul Keenan, and I live at 61 Acadia Lane, which is just east of the property that you're talking about here. And I guess our concern there is, what's the site plan gonna look like? I just heard there's not gonna be any review of it, so do they, do we have a site plan we can look at?
They're not making any exterior change.
Nothing?
Not taking down any of those trees?
No.
No?
No, they're not proposing it at this time.
Unless it happens to be a dead tree, that's dangerous, but...
Yeah. Where's the storm work go, from all the pavement?
It's already been designed for the prior...
That's all, when it was all engineered, when the building was built originally, sir.
What's the setback requirement from property line to their structure?
Well, it certainly meant that when it was constructed. I don't know what it is today.
Yeah, but how far can they develop this plan?
To answer that question, they're exempt from land use, local land use regulations. They're not presenting to go any further or make any changes at this time. But to answer your question, if they wanted to, our zoning setbacks do not apply to this project.
Wow, so they can cut down all those trees next to our house?
That's not what they're proposing, but they are exempt from our local land use regulations.
So there was, there's some signs along Holland Way that call it a watershed protecting area? Is that part of this, is that in this area?
I don't know. The watershed for the reservoir.
Right.
Yeah.
On the other side of the road, right?
But nothing's changing, so...
I've seen those signs on the north side of the road, I haven't seen anything on the south side. But I, I agree with Mr. Cameron here. I, I think there's gonna be a traffic problem. You know, you're gonna have people coming in Holland Way and turning right, and then when they go home, they're gonna have to come out and turn left. It's gonna be a mess. Maybe a traffic study is needed.
We have no authority to require it.
Okay. Do you have chemistry labs in the building?
We will have, we won't have chemistry labs, we'll have chemistry, we'll have different science projects and things that we do, but we're not setting up a complete chemistry lab in the building.
So you're not gonna have any fume hood exhaust from the building?
There's already a fume hooded exhaust in the building.
Okay. What about your, you're gonna be putting in other structures there, like a gymnasium and athletic field?
No.
No? So you're only gonna use that one building that's there, and that's it?
Correct, sir.
Anybody, you have any idea what the impact is on our property taxes?
Public school classification, so that doesn't mean it's not be taxed?
Yeah, it will be taxed, exact, right.
Taxes, yeah.
And now we lose some tax money, because the other people that are there now are paying taxes, just like any school, sir.
Oh, I think what he's asking is, is are there any taxes associated with the land as it existed before they stepped into? I think that's what he's asking.
Someone was, someone was paying taxes.
Somebody was paying taxes.
They won't be.
That's correct.
No, no one was paying taxes on the church, once it's...
Right, I, I understand that, but I think that's...
The opposite from the church.
Yeah.
Right.
Well...
Good questions.
If there ever is a site plan, we'd like to see it. Just curious of what that property will look like five or six years from now.
I don't think anyone knows that yet.
I know. Somebody must have this master plan in I, in mind for the property.
It's gotta be something in the county registry, laying on file, I guess, I don't know. I don't know how old those buildings are anyway, you know? They're not, they're not all old buildings. The age of the building's not, I don't think.
Is that the original Tyco building, isn't it?
Yeah. And then they did the whole other side of the street.
Right.
So your kitchen, kitchen and the cafeteria are gonna be in the existing building?
Being a charter school, we're not required to serve lunch, so the families will be asked to bring their own lunch.
Brown bag?
Yep, so we brown bag, we'll, we'll have a small, which is already a small kitchen there, which will be for staff and for special activities with the students.
Open houses.
Yep.
Hey, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Donna Slaughter, 61 Acadia Road. If you live in the area, you know how bad the traffic is, and I'm not sure if you realize how bad it is. We have 39 people in our unit, and, and the last two years, three have had accidents between Holland Way and 61 Acadia Lane, and I know two were rear-ended. There could be more, I don't know, those are three that I know of. It's a dangerous intersection, Holland Way, and people speed on that road, 'cause the police are always there. So you have to really make sure you're going 35, it's very easy to go over that. But I, I think there's gonna be traffic issues. There already are traffic issues. If you ever been down Guinea Road, when the cooperative school is picking up or dropping off, sometimes you can't get through there. So I mean, we know, I'll, I'll know to avoid that area, but this is gonna be big traffic implications. We need a stoplight there now, so, and I know they're proposing 325 children, so you can stack all you want, but I don't think it's gonna matter. That's it.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Well, let me close that public session then and bring it back to the board. Let's see, any thoughts, recommendations, suggestions, other than, we wish them good luck? I don't...
Well, I know, I think some of the things that we've talked about need to be conveyed to them in writing. I don't think that we should just do this verbally. I think if the board has some concerns, and I think some of us have voiced some concerns.
Yep.
I think that should be conveyed to them. Admittedly, there's no case for this to become a part of, but I do think that since we agreed to, to give them advice, for the lack of a better word, I think we should be doing that. Now, maybe, maybe the board doesn't agree with me, but that's all right, that's happened before.
Well, we, we're suggesting that school signs be requested to be installed along Holland Way is one thing, I believe. Another is pretty clear in the consensus, I think, that that intersection is busy, and the town never wanted to widen out another lane, so a person on, who's waiting to turn on Holland Way cannot be passed on the inside, so maybe that's a, an intersection that needs review somehow, sometime, Dave. I don't know if that's on anybody's list, but...
It is, yeah.
Lot of traffic. We've got people, a lot of people living there now, you got this, all the school traffic, it's, well, not all, but ninety, probably at least half of the middle school traffic goes up that way. It's gotta be more than half.
All the traffic on our Acadia Way is new as well.
Yes, yep.
That wasn't there five years ago or six years ago.
Is it big enough for a roundabout?
Oh, I, I don't know. I can't answer that question. I mean, that, what I, what I came up to tell you is, is the, the voters have been good about approving funding for the intersection improvement program. I'm sure some of you remember that on the Warren articles every year for, you know, 50,000 usually, and, and money's building up, and they've done some preliminary studies on some intersections, and they're at a point...
on some intersections, and they're at a point where they're, just talking to the DPW the other day, is it implementation, you start looking, because this is one of those intersections, so is Guinea, Guinea Road, Guinea Road, Hampton Road, and this intersection, you know, Pine Street, Linden, Railroad, Winter, you know, those are kind of the top intersections that we recognize there are safety and traffic issues, that's part of that intersection program. That was the whole point of the program, was look at all these various, identify the high priority intersections, do some studies, and then start doing implementation, but that's not, you know, going to be immediate, you know, and someone has to prioritize, we're going to start that discussion, to start prioritizing which intersections should be, should, you know, kind of the order of implementation, this intersection first, second, third, and that will be a matter for the DPW to work with the town manager and the select board to come up with that, but this, both of that intersection, this intersection is on that, is on that master list.
But this is a whole new influx of traffic.
Yeah, as well as, as well as Acadia Lane, and when we did that, too. So, we recognize this, you know, in the DTC lawyer building, and, you know, yeah.
The good news is, is land around that intersection to make improvements.
Yes, yes.
You don't have to some of the intersection.
Yeah, you do have some wetland issues on the opposite side of this parcel, on the opposite side of Holland Way, the wetlands come right up to the roadway, because we looked at possibly putting a sidewalk on that side, you know, that crosswalk crosses over, there's some private property, but when you get down toward that intersection, it's wet right up to the road. So, there is some challenges, but there is definitely opportunity to probably do better than what's out there, that's for sure.
Are traffic counts done on those roads or intersections? Do we have any data for that, any of those? I mean, I know...
Yeah, I don't know exactly where, but the state, the state does periodic traffic counts in and around town, so does the Rockingham Regional Planning Commission.
Yeah.
I haven't recently, for any reason, looked at what those were, but I know they have counts on Holland Way, I know they've had counts on Hampton Road and High Street.
Yeah, okay. This is starting to sound like parking, I mean, well, a little side conversation. Sir, you had another thing to add, yes?
Paul Keenan again, I just want to clarify, there's not going to be any changes to the site, is that correct?
Correct.
They're not proposing any, at this time.
At this time, well, when they do, you get a chance to look at them?
They are exempt from our land use regulations. They're under the state law, we don't have any authority...
Okay.
...to do other than what we've done now.
Mm-hmm.
Correct.
I agree with that, too.
And if, you know, and if they do, I mean, what triggers it is a substantial new use or a substantial change in use. I would argue, if there isn't one, then they don't even have to submit plans, if it doesn't meet that threshold of substantial new use or a substantial change in use. That triggered that because it went from a commercial to, it went from Tyco to a school, which I think the attorney and myself both agree that it is substantial new use, but now that the use has been established, if they go to add an addition, I'm not sure it triggers that, this process over again. In other words, I don't, I don't hope to see them again.
So, back to where we were, are there any other items we've discussed that we'd like to have relayed to these folks?
I just think, for me, I mean, it's not ours to say, but it would be interesting to find out if they can put a school zone, something up there.
Yeah.
Signage, DPW, whoever has to do that.
But, yeah, that's what I mentioned, yeah. Get some signage done, yeah.
Yeah, now, if I can kind of summarize that, you did provide for good comments that will be written, and I'm sure Mr. Sharples will provide them to us, and that would be included, that would be, no, and I think that's part of the statute, by the way, I think you're allowed to provide us written comments, and we...
Barbara.
We're here talking about them, so we'll work with those, and, you know, we'll try and pursue that issue that you just raised, and that will be part of those comments. So, we do appreciate those comments, and, you know, we're not trying to run in here and just slap it down and run out, so, you know, we want to be a good use and, you know, make sure that we do things right as well, so, I think that's evident in terms of what we provided, and how even though we didn't have to, we worked with an engineer to, you know, look at those issues. So, we'll continue to look at those issues and take those comments to heart and try and work with them as best we can in terms of a school zone or something of that nature. So, thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think we're set, thank you very much. We'll close the hearing at this point.
Unless someone wants to say anything.
Unless anything has anything to say? Okay.
I don't think Dave was done.
No, can I just be clear on what?
What we decided to offer them.
I got a school zone. I got something about the intersection.
Traffic concerns.
Yeah, like, what do you want to say about that? Mention the intersection?
Well, that we have concern with the intersection, and what it may turn into with increased vehicles on that, that aren't there now.
And that maybe the town needs to be proactive.
Yes, yeah, I mean, it's kind of a, we're throwing up...
27th Estate Road, so, you know, it's probably takes...
But, I mean, to me, it's important that...
Yeah.
Yeah, we talked about the start and end time of school and trying to maybe stagger it a little bit. I think the Guinea Road, Middle Street School starts at 7:30, and they were talking about 8:00 and 8:15, but it just, you know, it was just a concern that added to the traffic.
The cooperative middle schools like 7:30?
Yeah.
And they're working, they're talking about that anyway, so, but keep up the good work.
Thank you very much. Perfect, thank you.
All right, well, thank you very much for coming, appreciate your time, and wish you good luck.
Thank you.
Any next items on the business, I mean, business on the item, other business, does any master, oh, we were going to talk about making a recommendation to the planning board, making a recommendation to Dave to incorporate...
To maybe, yeah, a plan for, for...
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. A plan for designating parking spots that correlate to Dioka, the church, and any other developments that don't come with...
Or that, I think it's more just to, to put a parking study in place for that purpose, whatever, yeah.
Yeah, just if I can?
Yes.
Where I was trying to, sorry, I muffle, I can't help it.
You will muffle.
Where I was going with this is that we, we have an issue, right? So, we all have to talk about it and see what works best for the town, whether we start issuing permits to people, whatever. My biggest concern was the cumulative issue here, and so, I don't know what the answer is, but it's literally the parking study. We might not have a problem right now, but it's kind of like the train station, right? We had a problem, we had a really serious problem, and now we don't have one, but COVID changed that, and people are still working from home. It doesn't mean that problem's not going to come back, we still have it right now.
Yeah, I think we all agree with that, because we don't want to just keep having projects that we say, oh, yeah, there's lots of parking, but at some point, we just have to count how many parking spots we no kidding have to have at night in winter.
I just don't see about literally designating specific spots to specific places.
Okay.
Do you see where, yeah.
I think the conversation is to encourage Dave to put a parking study into the upcoming CIP.
Absolutely, and then the parking study will look at it, because there are parking problems out there in the downtown. Maybe not overall, as far as utilization and capacity, we're not at capacity. I counted all the on-street parking spaces within a tenth and two-tenths of the van stand, and we have plenty of capacity for on-street parking, but there are specific issues that some have utilization, you know, 100% utilization rates along certain sections of Water Street and the municipal lot, so we have, we're at capacity, you know, once you get about 85% utilization rate, and people start driving around looking for parking problems, you have issues. So, the parking study will do a few things, will look at a variety of solutions and probably implement a variety of recommendations to manage the parking in the area. Some of it, like, for example, and I'm not saying this is, you know, what's going to be recommended, but thinking the solutions that are available to are paid parking, strictly enforced timed parking, so, you know, you have your two-hour parking or your, you know, 30-minute parking, whatever you want to do, you have your various timed parking and your various, so you have turnover, you know, timed parking is create turnover, more in the commercial sense, and as you go out, away from like the hub, you can do resident permit parking, you can issue permits to people that live on these streets, like, give them one with their, you know, vehicle registration or something, like, they have a permit to park, and then you can sell residential permit, or permit parking only, so you, you know, people can come and purchase them, so like PEA folks, if they wanted to park on Elm or Elliot or any of those, that, if it was permit, they, you know, they would need permits, and you can, you manage it and you control where people go, and you can adjust pricing and so forth, and the number of permits to kind of manage the parking, so. I think that that is really needed, I mean, we were looking at, you know, looking at that a few years ago, so, I really appreciate your support to push that forward in the CIP, I'd be happy to, you know, get that for the 2023 warrant.
Just remember, we can't enforce parking right now, so we can put signs up to our parking.
Well, there's various, yes, you can, you can enforce permit parking, you can enforce paid parking.
Permit, but we don't have that right now, is what I'm saying, is right now, we, we can say, but people can park in an overnight parking spot, and they could stay there all the next day, right? We have no way, even if it was signed, because of the Supreme Court decision, unless I'm missing an update on this, we can't chop tires anymore, or things like that, we have no way of enforcing timed parking.
Well, they make parking meters that, like, and I just think of one that is outside the Pentagon where everyone go for lunch, where sometimes for special things, where you could get a free hour, and you could turn the thing, you get your free hour, but then if you stay there longer than an hour, it clicked red, like you're a parking violator, and they could give you the ticket, but you, but you didn't have to pay for parking, you just had to not stay there all day.
Possibilities.
Yeah.
Yeah, once you, if we go down that road about some sort of paid parking scheme, there's so many cool options now, there's sensors where you go and you, you can do have, and you don't even need kiosks anymore, it's all pay by phone now, it can tell, yeah, the technology is very cool, but let's, let's get the study done, let's get some solutions, potential solutions, our recommendations.
And there was a grocery store.
The key is getting the study approved for funding and...
Education, I'm worried we need that.
But I have a certain deja vu about this, John, don't, don't...
Yeah, we've been here before.
We've been down, somehow, the back of my mind, we've been down, I won't say down this road, but...
We started down this road, we didn't get to the end of it.
We didn't get to it, but we, I mean, when you, some of, well, I mean, an example, for instance, is Concord, they have a system to enforce. I've gotten unfortunately, parking tickets, now, they're not a fortunate, but nonetheless, the end of two hours, there's a little lady or a little gentleman coming along and giving me a citation for overstaying the two hours, so there is an ability to enforce.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, there is.
All right, I don't know how Concord does it, I just know you can't chalk tires anymore, I don't know what the...
But you have to put a little thing in your dashboard.
You get the little meter?
Oh, that's something that's already, oh, a meter's already in place, or, we don't have it.
I understand that, but that's...
That's another way to do it, and that is an enforcement issue.
Yeah.
You have till 5:30.
There's a lot behind the Harris Teeter.
And 5:37, many times I've had a little, a little up note.
Okay, is there any?
And you just push a button.
Are we off the record?
No, no, we're still busy.
Still, quite well.
Any field modifications, Dave?
None requested.
Okay, no bond letters?
None requested, well, actually, none issued, requested, but not issued.
Okay.
We'll tell you when we, when we authorize it.
Okay, our next meeting is in next month, the 16th?
9th, or?
9th.
June 9th.
9th, yeah.
That's when the Ray Farm comes back, right?
That's when they've been continued, they've been requested.
Is someone else on the...
And we'll have Ray.
Agenda that day, too?
Ah, I believe so.
Is it going to be?
You're sitting in a hot seat.
Oh, I'll make a motion to adjourn?
Thank you, yes.
I didn't want to...
Move to adjourn.
I didn't want to...
We stand adjourned.
Thank you for tuning into Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels, available on Comcast Channels 98 and 22. Channel 98 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAU16 and can be found on Channel 13 with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Biweekly Report with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV and hope that you tune into our other content as well.